I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, April 1st, 2024, to order at this time. And I'll ask Assistant County Manager Janelle Galloway to provide the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, thank you, sir. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Bless our telecommunicators, who we honor here today, for their dedication to our citizens during their most critical times of need. Father, we pray for our military and first responders, who continue to serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May your blessings be upon us always. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, the beliefs, and the traditions of those gathered here today, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize the elected officials that are here with us this morning. First, our Register of Deeds, Mr. Miga Jarman is here with us this morning. North Topsail Beach Town Alderman, Mr. Rick Grant, and our Sheriff, Mr. Chris Thomas. Appreciate you being here this morning. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any topic upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner Comment Period on the agenda. With that being said, I need a motion to adopt today's agenda.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And now, unless there's someone that wants to remove something from the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull Item C.
Okay. Second. Item C. We will move to the, uh, Item 5 at the end. That'll be the discussion on the transfer of nonprofit agency grant award to the City of Jacksonville. So that'll be moved to Item 5. Any other items? All right. I have a approval of the consent agenda as amended.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. So now we'll move right into presentations. We have six proclamations this morning. And Mr. Smitherman, if you would like to carry us through those or...
Actually, Assistant Manager Janelle Galloway is going to be handling the proclamations today?
I will, yes. Thank you, sir. Our first proclamation, I'll read into the record, State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation honoring General Alfred M. Gray. Whereas since 1950, General Alfred M. Gray, USMC Retired, served our great nation with honor, courage, and commitment that exemplifies the ultimate in ethical and moral behavior. And whereas his service to the United States Marine Corps continued beyond his 41 years of active duty, with close ties to the Marine Corps Association and Foundation and many other marine organizations. And whereas General Gray was the commander of the 2nd Marine Division on Camp Lejeune during the 1983 Beirut barracks bombings. He attended over 100 funerals and was a pillar of strength and inspiration to the Marines under his command and the surrounding community. And whereas he presided over the development and publication of the Fleet Marine Force Manual 1, Warfighting, which remains the foundation for how Marine Corps thinks about, prepares for, and executes all Marine Corps operations. And his exemplary service led him to assume the office of Commandant of the Marine Corps. And whereas every Marine is, first and foremost, a rifleman. All other conditions are secondary. This quote spoken by General Al Gray is printed in rifle data books issued to recruits during training. And without a doubt, the famous saying is what Marines are best known for today. And whereas General Gray was beloved by Marines, both past and present, and also the citizens of Onslow County, whom he lived among during his multiple duty assignments aboard Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune. And now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners will forever be in appreciation of the more than four decades of distinguished service General Alfred M. Gray, USMC Retired, gave our nation. And in a show of solemnity and to honor him, we'll lower the county flag to half-staff on April 4th, 2024. Accepting this proclamation will be members of the Onslow Civic Affairs Committee, and the Chairman has requested that Commissioner Buchanan present the proclamation.
This is really an honor and a pleasure for me. I was a lieutenant with the Jacksonville Police Department when I met Al Gray as a two-star general. Him and Chief Halber were very close friends, and they used to go to the Onslow Inn every Saturday morning for breakfast. I got to meet him several times over there and had breakfast with him. This is when he was a two-star general. But the story I have to tell, I have to tell this story, I've told it many times. I was a young lieutenant out at West Onslow Beach teaching repelling to the Raleigh Police Department. And these two ROTC buses pulled up. And a major came off those buses and said, you know, Lieutenant, we need to use the tower and we need to use the wall to repel. I said, okay, it's your base. You can use my lines, my ropes, everything we're setting in place. Here comes this Jeep around these buses. It's General Al Gray, two-star general. And he puts his arm around me and hugs on me, and he says, Paul, how are you doing? And I said, I'm doing very good today, sir. And that's all I said. That major comes scooting back over there and said, you can use the tower. I never asked Al Gray for anything. He is a super individual, a superhero. He's a hero in my book. I've been knowing him for many, many years, and God bless us for losing him. He's such a great man.
We're honored to receive this award on behalf of the Onslow Civic Affairs Committee. And we're also honored that we will be the morning site here in town. The Eagle Globe and Anchor over at Lejeune Memorial Gardens are going to be, uh, will be the morning and memorial site that we'll, we'll have officially here in the community. So thank you.
Our second proclamation this morning is for National County Government Month. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, County Government Month 2024. Whereas counties are one of America's oldest forms of government, dating back as early as 1634, and currently the nation's 3,481 counties provide essential services to more than 340 million citizens. And whereas in order to keep our community healthy, vibrant, and safe, Onslow County provides mandated and non-mandated services that play a key role in our citizens' everyday lives. Onslow County implements a broad array of federal, state, and local programs in cost-effective and efficient manners. And whereas this year Onslow County celebrates County Government Month in an effort to highlight services provided to citizens, share insight about the broader framework of intergovernmental partnership, and thank the public servants that work tirelessly every day for the benefit of our residents. And whereas Onslow County provides critical resources and services to our citizens, providing support, identifying challenges, pursuing innovative solutions to address them, and enhancing the health, welfare, and safety of our citizens. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares the month of April as County Government Month and is committed to the theme of this year's National County Government Month, Forward Together. With this, the county strives to connect, inspire, and lead all essential pillars of county government needed to build trust and work towards solutions to keep Onslow County, your county of choice in coastal Carolina. Our third proclamation is the month of the Military Child. Proclamation, Month of Military Child 2024. Whereas Onslow County is home to approximately 12,000 military children from every branch of service and the Guard and Reserve, and military children move an average of eight times from kindergarten to 12th grade, three times more often than their civilian peers. And military children often move to other countries. And whereas military children support our active-duty troops through multiple moves, deployments, injuries, illness, prolonged trainings, and periods of uncertainty or war, all while displaying resilience, grit, determination, and sacrifice. And whereas Onslow County Schools, Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, Marine Corps Air Station New River, and Marine Corps School Liaisons, and the various municipalities and communities of Onslow County collaboratively support these mobile children in schools, businesses, communities of faith, and civic organizations. And whereas April is a special month to recognize and pay tribute to military children for their daily sacrifices made and for their commitment, courage, and unconditional support of our military services. And purple is the combination of red, white, and blue. And whereas the children of our service members continue to make significant contributions to schools, communities, and the nation despite prolonged and repeated absences of one or both parents, and Onslow County reaffirms our commitment to ensuring excellence in schools, childcare, and youth services to military children who face unique challenges that other children their age never experience. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares April 19th, 2024 as Purple Up Day and encourage all individuals, businesses, and organizations to display their purple in their community spaces, wear purple clothing, and otherwise utilize the color to show support for and honor our smallest heroes who make such a big sacrifice, the children of our military service members. Accepting the proclamation will be school liaisons from Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune and Onslow County Schools, along with Allison Frazier and Carolyn Lott. Both are military children from Swansboro High School and semifinalists for the United States Marine Corps Military Child of the Year. The Chairman has requested that Commissioner Scott present the proclamation.
I truly thank this opportunity to have this, being retired military personnel with several deployments and a couple with my family. I totally understand the stress in the areas that go in that area. So on behalf of the Commissioners, I present this to you today. And I thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, sir.
Hi. On behalf of the Military School Liaisons and the Military Liaison Counselors for Onslow County Schools, we would just like to say how much we appreciate the support of Onslow County and our Onslow County Schools, 100% of which this year were Purple Star Schools, meaning they earned the recognition of being a military-friendly school. I'm honored also to be standing up here with these two young ladies. Would you guys like to say anything?
On behalf of the children of Onslow County Schools, specifically military children, we would like to thank the county for providing us with endless support and encouragement.
Here, you want to hold this while we get a picture?
Sure.
Our next proclamation is for the Onslow County Senior Games. Whereas mature adults and the entire community look forward to Onslow County Senior Games, an Olympic-style event designed to create a year-round health promotion and competition for participants that are 50 years of age and better. And whereas Onslow County Senior Games, held the 13th of April through the 6th of May this year, is sanctioned by the North Carolina Senior Games. And whereas the North Carolina Senior Games, the largest senior Olympic program in the nation, will include more than 60,000 total participants competing in more than 50 medal sports. And whereas the North Carolina Senior Games takes a holistic approach to improving individual health by involving the body, the mind, and the spirit of the athletes and promoting the importance of aging in a healthy manner. And whereas our well wishes are extended to all the competitors, especially the seniors from Onslow County community, who will strive to achieve their personal goals. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners welcomes the 2024 North Carolina Senior Games, a leader in guiding statewide programming in the area of health, aging, and recreation to Onslow County. The Board of Commissioners encourages all residents of Onslow County to applaud this organization's devotion to health promotion and to support the outstanding athletes participating in this year's Senior Games. Ms. Laquisha Codwallader and representatives from the Senior Games Committee will accept the proclamation, and the Chairman has requested that Commissioner Price present the proclamation.
On behalf of the Board, we'd just like to recognize those who were involved in helping to organize this event and those who are participating. And I noticed that it included everyone 50 and over, and so I'm a part of that group, I guess. And so, uh, I just wanted to thank you for all that you've done, that you do, you are doing, and all those who are going to participate, enjoy, and stay healthy.
On behalf of the Onslow County Steering Committee and our ambassadors and our 355 Senior Games participants this year, we'd just like to thank the Chairman, Vice Chairman, and the Board of Commissioners for your continued support. Thank you.
Our fifth proclamation this morning, State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month 2024. Whereas children are our state's most vulnerable members, as well as our state's most valuable resources, helping to shape the future of North Carolina and child protective services social workers assessed 2056 reports of child abuse, neglect, and dependency in Onslow County during 2023. And whereas positive childhood experiences, like loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships, can help mitigate trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences to promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations of their family. And whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious public health issue affecting every community, and finding solutions requires input and action from our families, child-serving organizations, schools, faith-based groups, businesses, governmental agencies, and civic leaders. And whereas children who live in families with access to concrete economic and social supports are less likely to experience abuse and neglect. And whereas we recognize the need to prioritize kids and invest in more prevention initiatives like home visiting and family strengthening policies, economic supports, and community-based child abuse prevention programs at the national, state, and local levels. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners recognizes April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and encourages all citizens to recognize this month by building a narrative of hope for children and families through collaboration and the creation of an ecosystem of primary prevention that does not currently exist in this country. Representatives from Onslow County Social Services will accept the proclamation, and the Chairman has requested that Commissioner Carpenter present the proclamation.
Well, I have to say that this proclamation says it all. The most vulnerable and the most valuable resources we have in our communities today are our children, and it's imperative that we do whatever it is possible within our community to avoid having any kind of abuse happening in that's, that area. One report of child abuse is one too many, in my opinion, and so I just thank each and every one of you for what you do on a daily basis, as well as spearheading what efforts there are throughout our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The theme for 2024 is Building a Hope for Future Together, with an emphasis on the power of prevention and the strength of community support. So while the folks of social services are often viewed as the frontline when it comes to cases of abuse or neglect, I want to make sure we highlight that it is actually you, the residents of Onslow County, who have the greater role and the greater responsibility every day in ensuring that the children of Onslow County can grow up in safe, stable, and nurturing environments. Thank you.
Our sixth and final proclamation for this morning is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week 2024. Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our first responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Onslow County Communications Center. And whereas the skilled public safety telecommunications is the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and are the single vital link for our first responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas telecommunications of Onslow County Emergency Services Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas emergencies can strike at any time, and we rely on the vigilance and preparedness of these individuals 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares the week of April 14th, 2024, through April 20th, 2024, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Onslow County, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our community and citizens safe. Representatives from Onslow County Emergency Services will accept the proclamation, and the Chairman has requested that Commissioner Bennett present the proclamation.
Wow, this is awesome. Most of you probably don't know, I started my law enforcement career as a telecommunicator many years ago. Back then, they called us dispatchers. And we didn't do nearly as much as you guys do. When I go in your telecommunications center now and see all of the, uh, all of the things that you have to do and keep up with, I'm impressed with, with all the work that you do now. So we really appreciate what y'all do. We know that you're the first contact with our citizens who are in need, and I'm honored to present this proclamation on behalf of the Commissioners for Telecommunications Week.
First and foremost, I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for providing this proclamation, recognizing our telecommunicators. Secondly, I would like to thank the work that of all our telecommunicators do, those that are here with us today. I promise you, while we do have a large group with us here, we do have people still at the office taking 911 calls today. But I, I do appreciate all the work they do, and a lot of times, people don't really realize how much they do. As Commissioner Bennett was talking about, this year alone, we've had 173,000 phone calls that came into our County 911 Center that in turn, we dispatched over 130,000 more calls for. And of those calls, you'll hear about some of them a little bit later, of how it's, you know, childbirths and CPR saves, but it's much more than that. It's coordinating with law enforcement on chases. It's helping getting fire services out to structure fires. It's making sure the ambulances are getting to the right locations. There is so much coordination that goes on between this telecommunications center, as well as many others around our community, to help provide and service to the citizens. And we do appreciate the day to be able to thank them for all that they do. Thank you.
So we'll move to, uh, Item B, presentation to honor our telecommunicators. And to be here to do that this morning is Mr. Norm Bryson, Emergency Services Director, and Mr. Ray Silence, our telecommunications division head.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to come today, and I would like to recognize the following names who have given, given lifesaving CPR instructions over the telephone throughout the last year. Bobby Sessons. Kelly Kennedy. Katie Dixon had two. Jessica Armstrong had three. Lee McPherson. Ryan Cole. Meredith Pike. Blakely. Lindsey Stevens had two. The next one is being honored for giving childbirth and delivering a baby boy, and that's Justine Grimaldi. Again, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Item C, Community Child Protective Team and Community Child Fatality Prevention Team Annual Report. We'll have Kim Bailey will be coming up to present that this morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. How are you?
Good morning.
Good morning. I hope that I'm hitting the right arrow. No. I'm going to go in the other direction. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I am here to present the 2023 yearly report for CCPT and CFPT. For those who do not know, CCPT stands for the Community Child Protection Team and Community Child Fatality Prevention Team is CFPT. As far as who encompass our groups for CCPT and CFPT, we have multiple modalities, from law enforcement to the court system via judge representation, to parent representatives, DJJ Youth Services, Onslow Memorial Hospital, the Health Department, DSS, EMS, Trillium, Naval Hospital, and the Guardian Edlyum. The CCPT meeting, we discuss cases where barriers to service provisions arise. We strive to bridge disconnects. We have discussions which take place on how to partner to ensure the needs of our citizens are met for the are met for those receiving protective services. Meetings are held monthly at our Consolidated Human Services Building. During the 2023 year, there were three cases that were discussed through CCPT. That was to discuss system barriers and ways for our community partners to work with one another to ensure quality services and to bridge those gaps in services. We also review, in CFPT, fatalities, and there were 50 during the last year. We review all child fatalities occurring in Onslow County, and we process and discuss child deaths to determine if there were any system barriers, to include issues and concerns needed to educate the public. Many of our fatalities are preventable. Some of our conditions that are affected our youth in the, in those fatalities was due to co-sleeping. This is a continued issue. It has been for some time. Also parental and prenatal substance use. There's a high correlation with substance-affected infants and unsafe sleep practices, which lead to fatality. Lack of medical care before, during, and after pregnancy are also challenges that are discussed. Teen suicides, because through bullying issues that arise for youth of this age, lack of coping skills and mechanisms, that has led to an increase in teen suicide. And of course opioid use among youth and families. The number of deaths due to unsafe sleep practices, there were three in 2023, which were reviewed. And our teen suicide deaths, there was one in 2023 due to hanging. So thankfully, that is a decrease, but it is still a continued issue because one death is one too many, whether it be from unsafe sleep or from suicide. Ways that we address the conditions and concerns, reporting child abuse. I think the, the main thing is to make sure that people are aware, our citizens are aware, and how to report abuse. There's always someone on staff with Child Protective Services, whether that is during the day or in the evening hours. And so if, with increased availability, we hope that our citizens are aware that they can make Child Protective Services reports, because the sooner we're involved, the sooner we can intervene and hopefully stop a child from being harmed. Youth and violence and suicide prevention are different strategies that we've used, and also an increased awareness and immunizations that are available through the Health Department and through our hospitals as well. We continue to provide education to the public about safe sleep for infants. These take place with DSS, within DSS, also through the Health Department, through the C-Mark program, as well as Naval Hospital and Onslow Memorial Hospital after mothers give birth. It is part of a parenting education curriculum. There's an increase in trauma-informed training and awareness. You heard ACEs mentioned previously, and those are, those support systems. It's recognizing that trauma does not solely define you, because we all have strengths, we all have support systems, and sometimes people just need a little help in identifying what those support systems may be. Pregnancy risk factors and importance of early prenatal care. This education is provided by the Health Department. And of course, those flu vaccines and the benefits of it, and making everyone aware. We continue to participate in outreach and gathering functions, such as the, the jamboree when it was last held, National Night Out. We do trainings within the community when we are requested, sometimes we request. We provide trainings on base and trying to make as much awareness as possible. There are also, as far as the car seat installations, those are done through law enforcement entities, through the Fire Department, as well as peers. There's someone who is specially trained to insert car seats at peers. We have actively participated in trainings from the state to support our efforts. Barriers are the lackly, lack of time, excuse me, lack of timely access to appropriate mental health and substance use-related services. There is more availability now, especially with the expansion through Trillium, as well as the different substance use-related entities that are available in our community. Challenges are receiving medical records from our military-related citizens. Sometimes there is a barrier in obtaining those, and that impedes our ability to protect children at times. As far as the challenges within our community, there's the continued opioid and substance use crisis within our county, failure to follow safe sleep protocols. It is not only within Onslow County regarding the concerns for safe sleep, it's also within the state of North Carolina, so much so that it is now considered neglect for unsafe sleep-related situations, because these deaths are preventable. Lack of awareness and communication on red flags of teen suicide and recognizing those signs. There are so, children have so much to face. There's, there's so many, I guess, dangers, whether it's peer pressure, whether it is mental health bullying that lead to teen suicide. And so often, parents are unaware of the early signs, and speak to your kids. It's okay to have those crucial conversations with them. Don't be afraid. The, how we help Onslow County, of course, we have the Safe Kids Coalition working with CCPT and CFPT at community outreach events, events which focus on keeping children safe, and then partnering with care management for at-risk children or C-Mark to participate in safe sleep, or they promote and present safe sleep-related information to clients. A plan of safe care, any report that is accepted for a, as a substance-affected infant, there is a plan of safe care that a social worker jointly develops with the family. It is also developed when a medical provider has diagnosed, of course, zero to six months, a child is being substance-affected infant, and it has to be, it's mandatory that it be developed prior to a child being discharged from the hospital with their parent. And those are just safeguards that are put in place, whether that is a support system, someone that the parent can rely upon to help to ensure protection and safety of children. Of course, we have our Pinwheel Garden that we display at the Consolidated Human Services Building, just to remind everyone that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And that is the end. Any questions?
I have one question. Just looking at the two different graphs that you selected to show, highlight teen suicide deaths, as well as deaths due to unsafe sleep practices. The total for 2023, that constitutes four out of the 50 child fatalities. Can you shed any light on what the other distribution might look like, because it seems like there must be a clumping somewhere else?
Yes, there is. Oftentimes, it's due to prematurity. We saw, we reviewed several of those cases. We had some, unfortunately, due to homicide, and there could have been medical-related issues after the child was born. That takes a large part of them as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Any more questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Smithman, we're moving to Item Four, Public Comment.
Chairman, we do not have anyone signed up today.
All right, so that takes us to the Consent Agenda Items, where we had the transfer of nonprofit agency grant award to City of Jacksonville pulled off to discuss.
Mr. DeSalsmes to brief the board on that matter. And if Mr. Cannon would like to start the conversation.
The reason I pulled it was that it's unusual, the way it was done. I've never seen it done this way in the 20 years I've been sitting here, and we've given a lot of money to Museum of the Marine, and I believe I did make the motion on the $75,000 to give to the Museum of the Marine. I know that Pat and Lee Walker are very concerned about the bathrooms and whatnot there. I'm just, this procedure was just totally left field. I didn't see it.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll provide some context for you. So this board, in the 2023-2024 budget, approved $75,000 for the bathroom facilities. The City of Jacksonville evidently received a $500,000 grant from the state for the same project. So they were going to use the city funds and the county funds to come together to, to do that project. The city reached out to the county and said, hey, can we get, administer that $75,000 for you? We're doing the, the management of the construction project. And in order for that to take place, so we're not paying for it twice, where you're terminating the initial agreement, which you all approved, of $75,000 to the nonprofit, and instead giving it to the city, so that the city can administer that money along with the state grant that they have. In other words, it doesn't change anything as far as the amount of dollars you've attributed to the project, and just changes, instead of giving it to the nonprofit, we're giving it to the city to administer for the project. And it's my understanding that the nonprofit agreed to this as well. This is something that was brought to the county for consideration, and that's what's been brought to the, for the consideration as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the, and the only other thing that I'd want to add to that, this has nothing to do with the Vietnam Veterans Memorial here.
Correct.
This is the bathroom facility.
It's just the welcome center.
It's just the bathroom center.
Yeah, it's just the bathroom's what it is, Walker, that Lee and Pat Walker wanted.
Right, correct.
Yes, sir.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So now we, Mr. Smithman, your comments.
My comments is, are that it was a great three days to be in Onslow County the last three days. It was beautiful over Easter. I was lucky enough to enjoy it with a huge portion of my family, and I hope you all had a great Easter also. That's my report, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Carpenter, we'll start with you this morning.
Well, I don't have necessarily a lot to share, other than last Thursday, I was able to be at the ribbon cutting for the Hope for the Warriors organization establishing themselves at the airport in place of where the USO used to be, and that was a, a great celebration, and they will be up and functioning, I think it's today. Hold on one second. It is today?
It is today.
Yeah, today. So military-related folk can go in there and find a respite and get some resources for what they might need in the community. And I do hope and pray that everyone has enjoyed a great Easter weekend and happy Easter Monday. Thank you.
Commissioner Price.
Just like to thank our telecommunicators for their service to our community. It takes a certain personality, I would think, to try to answer a phone of somebody who's frantic and in a, in a desperate situation, and to be able to calm them down, that's a, that's a skill set I, I know I probably don't have. So I just appreciate all you guys do. Also, just want to acknowledge, if you're able, on Saturday evening at around 6 o'clock, I think the Wolf Pack are in the final four and taking on the roller makers that produce, so try to set your, your reminder there to pull for the pack. Have a great day.
Commissioner Scott.
That's hard to follow, Mark, I'd say. It's a really great, I attended the ceremony with Lisa this past week at the airport. Looking forward to see what all goes on with that. I too want to thank the telecommunicators. You guys do a wonderful job. You, you are the first line, and other than that, be safe, be, be, now be aware of your surroundings, and God bless. We'll see you at the next meet.
Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for coming today. A lot of relevant proclamations today. I have a lot of appreciation for all of you that were involved in those. I'd just say, I hope everybody had a happy Resurrection Sunday, and hope you have a good day. Thank you.
Commissioner Cannon.
I always thank the telecommunicators. We got the right color on today.
That's right.
Go State. Thank you all for being here.
Vice Chairman.
I just want to say congratulations to the telecommunicators. From a personal standpoint and from a law enforcement background, you guys are always at the tip of the spear. Sometimes people forget about you, but you guys do an important job. You're an integral part of the job. You're the lifeline for some of these law enforcement guys and firefighters that are out there, getting direction, instruction, et cetera, and to the public. So congratulations, well deserved. And I see Brian Cole there, former law enforcement officer, so he understands completely, but congratulations, guy. And I will say this, from this Florida State fan, congratulations to North Carolina Wolf Pack. You are wearing red, and so sad for UNC. Mr. Chairman.
And Duke.
And Duke, I'm sorry. Y'all have a good day.
First, thank you to the telecommunicators. That, that first phone call that is sent out is so important for someone to be on the other end that is able to take care and do the job that you do. We appreciate that very much. Also, Senior Games coming up. That's opening on the 13th. I don't know if any of my fellow commissioners signed up for any. I don't think they did. I asked them, but they didn't want to do that. They none want to admit their age, but I did. I'll be playing golf, mini golf, croquet, and the football toss in the Senior Games. Looking forward to that. So it's always good to get out and participate. And just a lot going on. We appreciate everything that the leadership is doing, and everyone for coming out today. And I will say, go Pack! And I looked at NCAA tournament brackets when it started, and the only thing I can say to the vice chairman is Florida.
Who? Football season, son.
Now we need to adjourn.
It's a football.
We are adjourned.